Okay, members. Good morning. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the County Council's meeting taking place on Wednesday, this 22nd of September. This meeting is being broadcast live to our YouTube channel. Before we commence with today's formal business, could I ask everyone in the hall to switch off or make silent their mobile phones, please? Firstly, members, it is with great sadness that I have to formally report the passing of former Chesley Street District Councilor Richard Court. Richard represented the Lumley Ward on the District Council from 2007 to 2009. Members, we will remain seated for a moment as we remember Richard. Thank you, members. Before we move on to the agenda and the business, I'd like just to remind you of the housekeeping rules for the meeting. You will note that measures are once again in place for social distancing and one-way system is in operation. If you need to leave the main hall at any point, please do so following the one-way system as you leave and enter the room. You must wear a face mask when you move in the hall; however, you can remove your mask when you are seated. The external doors will be opened periodically to provide ventilation. Any requests to speak must be made using your handset. If you encounter any problems with your handset, please raise your hand in the air and a member of committee services will assist. Once invited to speak, members, please stand up and face forward and wait until one of the microphone operators is in the proximity. The microphones are being wiped down after each use. Please be patient as the staff do their best to coordinate these arrangements. I will now move on to today's business detailed on the agenda. Item one: the minutes. Can I have a mover and a second to please to confirm the minutes of the meeting held on the 14th of July 2021? Second, please. councillor Bell, thank you. Members, are the minutes agreed? Thank you. Item two is declarations of interest. Does any member wish to declare an interest in relation to any item of business on the agenda? Okay, members, thank you. Item three: chairman's announcements. Colleagues, as restrictions have gradually eased, I am pleased to say that I have started to resume some of the more regular functions as chair of your council. Since our last meeting, I have had met with the Police and Crime Commissioner for County Durham in Darlington, Joy Allen. I have visited Villa Real and Bishop Ian Ramsay schools, attended the Battle of Britain service in Durham Cathedral, and I also visit the Land, Air and Sea Museum in Sunderland. I had the privilege of attending the marvellous Seum Food Festival. No, I didn't put any weight on it. It was fantastic to see the thousands of people supporting this event to support independent traders, boost business, recovery and enjoy the outdoor theatre, music and taste in the activities against the stunning backdrop of Seum. It was absolutely brilliant. Seum Food Festival is just one of a number of events helping to showcase the county's cultural offer as well as building on the county's reputation for culinary excellence as the council bids to become UK City of Culture 2025. I am sure that Bishop Auckland Food Festival, taking place on the 2nd and the 3rd of October, will be equally as successful. Thank you, members. Councillor?
Thanks, Chair. Chair, I'd like to move a motion without notice, please, under CPR 11 to change the order of business on the agenda. John Hewitt, the interim chief executive, is not currently present at the meeting, pending item eight on the agenda being considered, so I propose that we deal with item eight now so that John can join the meeting. And I'd also like to propose that at this stage we suspend standing orders to allow motions to be heard and debated up until a maximum time of 12.15 to allow the agenda to be completed before the two-and-a-half-hour deadline, please.
Can I have a second, please? Chair, I second that proposal and motion with councillor Bell. Members, are we agreed to do item eight now? Thank you, members. Are the extension to the motions to 12.15 also agreed? Thank you, members. Can we now go to item eight, please?
Thanks, Chair.
Can I invite the leader of the council to present the report, please?
Thank you, Chair. This report outlines the process which was undertaken to appoint the permanent post of chief executive and makes a recommendation in relation to that appointment which requires the approval of full council. Full council previously considered a report relating to the post of chief executive and agreed to appoint John Hewitt, corporate director of finance, to the post on an interim basis for a period of up to 12 months. The Chief Officers' Appointment Committee then met on the 13th of July 2021 to consider the process which would be followed for recruiting to the post on a permanent basis and determined that an advert would be placed on North East Jobs, restricted to suitable candidates from Durham County Council, for which one application was received from Mr Hewitt. The cross-party Chief Officers' Appointment Committee proceeded to interview and following performance of interview concluded to offer John Hewitt the permanent post of chief executive, subject to approval by full council. I therefore wish to move the recommendation to appoint John Hewitt to the post of chief executive with immediate effect. Thank you.
Can I have a second, please?
Chair, councillor Carmarshel, leader of the Labour group, could I formally second the proposals from the demanders outlined? And in doing so, just say that from the group's perspective, John has led this council through one of the most turbulent times facing our generation, and I have no doubt at all that John will help to take this council forward in delivering its vision for our communities and residents across County Durham.
Thank you for that. Do any members wish to speak on this report? Thank you. Are we agreed, members, to the report? Thank you, members. Thank you very much. Congratulations, John, from everyone. Members, can I go now to item four on the agenda, the leaders' report? Can I invite the leader of the council to present her report, please?
Thanks, Chair. I'm pleased I put on comfortable shoes for standing up and down this morning. So, on behalf of everyone, congratulations, John, on a permanent appointment. I'd like to welcome everyone back following the summer recess and I hope you were all able to take some time out to enjoy what warm weather we did have and recharge your batteries. Our response to the pandemic remains at the heart of much of the council's work, although I am pleased to say that the vast majority of services that had to close due to government restrictions are now back up and running again. We have also just launched our Covid Acts of Kindness campaign to highlight and recognise some of the wonderful things people across the region have done to support others during the pandemic and to provide ongoing support. If you know someone who deserves to be nominated, more information is available on the Beat Covid North East website. Meanwhile, County Durham's campaign to become the UK City of Culture 2025 is gathering pace as we approach the next stage of the busing process, and I would encourage everyone to visit the Durham 2025 website and share our social media messages with as many people as possible. Last week, cabinet met for the first time following the summer recess and approved plans to invest £49.6 million in the expansion of net park at Sedgfield. The third phase of developing the region's premier science and technology park will help us create more and better jobs for residents and will be worth up to £625 million to the county's economy. Our County Durham Care Academy has been awarded £70,165 grant by the Workforce Development Fund to help local care providers cover the expense of upskilling their staff. This funding is in addition to a £44,000 grant awarded last year and will assist in expanding the academy's training offer. During the recess, young people across the county received their GCSE and A-level results. These students have experienced unprecedented challenges during their last academic year, including two lockdowns and periods in between when many students were likely to have had to self-isolate. I am sure a council will join me in praising all our young people for the dedication and resilience in these times and also in thanking the school, the families and the council staff who have supported them. Over the summer break, our area action partnerships provided a wide range of support to children and young people through the Free Fun and Food Programme. This initiative provides healthy food for those who take part and was set up in response to the fact that some families struggle over the school holidays. An estimated 190 community facilities in the county are set to benefit from combined funding of more than £700,000 to help them recover from the pandemic. Venues have been invited to apply for grants from the Covid Outbreak Management Fund to help them reopen safely. And I am pleased to report that visitors to Chesley Street can now enjoy free internet access with the introduction of public wifi in the town centre. Funded by the council, the free public wifi is part of our multi-million pound towns and villages scheme to enhance the vibrancy of communities across the county and aims to help boost footfall in the town following the easing of coronavirus restrictions. And finally, the autumn sees the return of Lumiere, the UK's leading light festival, which will run across four nights from the 18th to the 21st of November. We are aiming for this year's event to be bigger and better than ever to light up our county as the dark nights take hold. And following the success as mentioned by the chair of the Seum Food Festival, Bishop Auckland Food Festival returns on Saturday the 2nd and Sunday the 3rd of October. This event will offer a packed programme of cookery demonstrations and entertainment as well as fresh produce courtesy of the county's finest food producers, so I'd encourage anyone who can to attend. Thank you, Chair.
Do any members have any questions on the report? Can I ask the council to move and note the report? Thank you, members. We'll move to item five on the agenda. Questions from the public. One question has been received for today's meeting. I would like to hand over to the head of Legal and Democratic Services to explain the procedure.
Thank you, Chair, and good morning, everybody. As the chair said, there's one question has been received this morning from Mr Cunningham. The chair will invite Mr Cunningham to ask his question and then the relevant portfolio holder to respond. Once the question's been asked and answered, there'll be no further discussion or supplementary questions, but the question and answer will be displayed on the council's website. Thank you.
Can I now invite Mr Mike Cunningham to ask his question, please?
Good morning, Mr Chairman. Reading from the council's latest statement of accounts on page 124, I note that the council holds a remainder from the original gift of £6 million sterling of taxpay's cash, of £3,160,000 sterling, which has been invested, my emphasis, in redeemable preference shares in Durham Cricket Community Interest Company, DCCIC, formerly the Durham County Cricket Club. My training and expertise is in heavy electrical engineering, not in finance, but having studied the accounts of the DCCIC, even a neophyte or mere beginner would swiftly realise that there is little or no chance of seeing even a fraction of that cash owed the council being either available or still there at the end of the loan period, again, my emphasis, mainly due to the powerless financial position of the aforementioned DCCIC, which owes nearly £6 million sterling. The council's duty is to supervise and care for the cash entrusted to it by the people who voted for you and should make every effort to recoup any money handed to provok inadequately financed and poorly run risky endeavours. As I have previously stated, I am no financial expert, but I would ask the leaders of the new administration if we should not indeed see the council as the majority debtor, strongly advise the DCCIC directors that they should provide new capital and allow the redemption of the loan or look at the viability of forcing this company into liquidation, sell the land to a developer and see the return of council taxpay's cash from the developer back into the council's bank accounts.
Thank you. Can I now refer the question to the cabinet portfolio holder, councillor Richard Bell, to respond, please?
Can I thank Mr Cunningham for his question? It's a subject I'm sure that many people are curious about. Durham County Cricket Club is one of the only major representative sports teams that represent the county on the national stage and is able to bring international sport to the county and ensure the county of Durham receives exposure on a global stage. This has been recognised in the past with the county council providing financial support to the club in the form of loans, not gifts, very much in line with the support other local authorities across the country have provided to their county cricket clubs. At the same time, the council has always sought to be prudent in the funding provided and has set clear expectations on repayment of any sums it has loaned and has sought to protect the public funding invested. In this regard, the county council provided loans of £4.3 million to the cricket club between 2009 and 2014, a period that culminated in the staging of an Ashes five-day game at Chesley Street in 2013. Over the period 2009 to 2017, the cricket club repaid £560,000 of principal repayments and were also required to pay £750,000 of interest that was being charged, rates of up to 7.5%. This interest returned to the council being significantly higher than what the council could have received from investing this sum elsewhere. During 2016 and 2017, the council worked in partnership with the English Cricket Board to secure the to secure the future of the cricket club. As part of this arrangement, the English Cricket Board agreed to write off all of their debt while the council agreed to convert its remaining outstanding debt of £3.74 million into 10-year redeemable preference shares. In this circumstance, the redeemable preference shares do not attract dividend payments, but the value of the redeemable preference shares must be repaid to the council over the 10-year period to 2027. In that regard, the cricket club have continued to commit to repay sums to reduce the value of the sum to be redeemed even during the period of the pandemic. In total, since 2017, the club have redeemed £780,000 from their outstanding sum resulting in the sum still to be redeemed reducing to £2.96 million currently. The council have board membership to the club and have access to all financial performance information. This indicates that the club are in a stronger position than at any time over the last 10 years and are now receiving additional income in relation to the new Hundred Cricket competition. To summarise, the council has provided £4.3 million of financial support to the cricket club with this support provided a number of years ago now. To date, the cricket club have repaid or redeemed £1.34 million or 30% of this sum with £2.96 million still left to be redeemed. Interest payments of £760,000 have been received. In line with the 10-year redemption deadline, the council fully expects that the outstanding £2.96 million will be redeemed by 2027 and our contempt at the improved financial position of the club will ensure that this is the outcome that is achieved. Thank you Chairman.
Okay members, can we move to item six, petitions? No petitions have been received for today's meeting. So I'll move on to item seven, report of the Cabinet. Can I ask the leader of the council to present the report, please?
Chair, present the report as written in the document, thank you.
No questions have been submitted, therefore can I ask the council to note the report?
Thanks Chair. In the opening paragraphs of the MTFP report, there's a list of factors which when combined create considerable pressure on the council's budgets. Now, that's fair enough, but what's missing from that list on this occasion is the impact that a decade of austerity's had on the council's budgets and services. Now, fairly recently, the government's been on record as saying that the period of austerity is now at an end and they've said that since the pandemic ended. But for many of us, we've yet to see any real improvement, certainly when it comes to any certainty in settling the council's budgets. So can the leader tell us, please, if the cabinet's received any confirmation one way or the other from central government that austerity actually is at an end or can we strap ourselves in for another extended period of needless austerity with the budget cuts and the service cuts it brings with it? Thank you Chair.
Member, I said that there had been no questions have been submitted, the time had lapsed, therefore I cannot answer, let anyone answer that particular question. It's quite clear that questions have to be submitted by the time.
Yeah, just to clarify the deadline, the deadline for questions on the Cabinet report is noon on the Friday before the meeting, so the deadline passed on noon last Friday.
Okay councillor Hopgood, if you're happy to answer this question, you don't have to, but you can.
I'm happy to answer the question on this occasion.
Okay, in that case.
And would just like to advise the members that these were the rules that you put in place when you were in the administration, so it might be worth checking them out ready for future meetings. I'm sure you absolutely know the answer to this is we haven't had any official writing to say that austerity is over, but equally we haven't had anything to say that it's continuing. Thank you.
No, 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 no. I'll ask for legal advice. You can give clarification if you think that you've been misinterpreted.
Chair, I apologise if I've misread the constitution, but at the beginning of the report, it does say that the leader will give the report which questions might be asked. Now, I've misunderstood the constitution and thought I was entitled to raise that question and I'm grateful for the leader for answering it, thanks Chair.
Thank you member. Okay, we'll move on. Can we move to item nine, which is motions on notice? Four motions have been submitted for today's meeting. They will be dealt with in the order in which they were received and are detailed on the agenda. I will now hand over to Helen Lynch, Head of Legal and Democratic Services, to remind us of the procedure rules regarding motions.
Thank you Chair, the usual rules of debate apply. Movers of motions have five minutes to speak, seconders and other speakers have three minutes. Members can only speak once on a motion other than a mover who has a three-minute right of reply. If an amendment is moved and seconded, the debate is on that amendment. Only one amendment may be moved and discussed at any one time, no further amendment may be moved until the amendment under discussion has been dealt with. Each member can speak once on an amendment except for the mover of the original motion, they have a right of reply before the amendment is put to the vote but may not otherwise speak on it. If, following the vote, an amendment is carried, it becomes a substantive motion. If the amendment falls, the debate goes back to the original motion.
Councillor Jake Miller, can you move your motion, please?
Thanks Chair, councillor Jake Miller, Trimpton and Thornley Division, and I formally propose this motion and request a name vote. 92% of County Durham is rural, which greatly impacts food poverty. My division and many other divisions are rural and I put money on there being at least one part of everybody's division being in some form of poverty. And that's not for dramatic effect, that's because it's true. You know, people all across the county are living in some form of poverty, whether that be food, financial or any other form. At the end of last year, we saw how big the need was to ensure so many children didn't go hungry during the six weeks holidays. Our leader mentioned in the report those circumstances as well. And the government were embarrassed into making their U-turn about free school meals. During the pandemic, I helped to set up a volunteer screen alongside the co-op member pioneers and our local church to help deliver food parcels to the most vulnerable in our village. However, it was apparent that the need was greater than just Wheatley Hill and within a couple of weeks, we were delivering food parcels within a five-mile radius of Wheatley Hill. And it wasn't just for food, it was the need for putting money on electric, it was to buy prescriptions and other things. When this, more and more people are now struggling to buy food and other necessities within the household and when this pandemic is finally over and we see the true implications that it's had on families and in our divisions, things are only going to get worse, especially those that are on universal credit with the deduction of £20, which another motion will address that issue. These needs that I've spoken about don't just vanish because Covid has or is, I mentioned in this chamber at the last meeting that myself and colleagues are still delivering food parcels every week across our division and that's because the need is still there. These are not just unemployed families, these are working families. Some have three or four jobs and are still struggling to put food on the table for their families. Some are single parents, some are grandparents, and this isn't happening just in my division, this is happening in every division across our county. That's why we need a single piece of work that solely deals with food poverty to relieve the pressure of families. This county needs an action plan in order to tackle the issue because we all have it across the county. We all have a duty to look after our constituents, especially the most vulnerable. We have a duty to help those who are truly in need and to ensure that in 2021 in County Durham, nobody goes hungry. A food action plan will help to highlight those areas across the county that are in the greatest need, will help community groups and EAPs tackle the issues that I've raised and it'll show that we as a council are not just going to sit and keep things as they are, we're actually going to take a firm stance on a really important issue and deal with it as best we can. There was already some great work done by this council during the pandemic, but that need, that need is still there and the work needs to continue and it needs to be developed into something greater which addresses the issues head-on to allow people who suffer every year, all year round, not just during a pandemic and give them the support that they need. And that's why I ask all those councillors across the county who volunteer in their local food banks or help their communities by doing similar work to what I've said, to vote for this motion. Thank you Chair.
The motion, members, the motion will require a seconder.
Thank you Chair, Lucy Hovell's, Trimpton and Thornley Division. I believe this motion will help tackle food hunger and poverty and will lift up the most vulnerable and the needy people. It will give long-term security to those who slip through the net and those at risk of food poverty. I see firsthand the hardship to families and the stress and the worry many families are facing with rising food costs, food costs and the reality issue. This motion for food action plan would provide opportunities to encourage civic engagement where local communities are empowered to make their own choices instead of relying on food banks. It's incredible that we have so much wealth in our county, yet there are so many families living with food poverty. Such a food action plan has the potential to decrease health costs by working collectively with, and working hard to break the cycle of diet-related diseases and make healthier choices for future generations. It is a known fact that low-income families have fewer resources and find it extremely difficult to access and support services. And again, I experience this on a daily basis within my community. I want all our County Durham residents to be healthy and to have a healthy economy and environment. This motion is an invitation to a range of practical actions where community partners can come together to make a difference. A breakthrough changes in how food action plan can shape the county, our communities and our future wellbeing. All we need is the will to act. I do hope all members support this motion. Food hunger is a tough problem, but if we all do our bit, it's one we can solve. Chairman, I second the motion this morning.
Thank you. Does any member wish to speak on the motion? Just before you go councillor, could I ask members to use your handset, please? That makes it a lot easier to get you in order so you're not feeling that you're getting missed out. So please use your handset, thank you. Councillor?
Councillor Alan Shields, member for Ledgate and Melonsley Division, also a rural division, portfolio holder for equality inclusion. I move the following amendment to the motion, to request that the appropriate portfolio holder within the joint administration involved in dealing with food poverty within Cabinet works with all partners, stakeholders and the relevant officers of this council to develop a holistic and all-encompassing poverty strategy that addresses the needs of all vulnerable and disadvantaged families across County Durham and to promote effective engagement and positive interaction with all members to ensure that families in need are fully and comprehensively supported. Through the council's Poverty Action Steering Group and with our partners in the advice in County Durham Partnership, we intend to make best use of our collective resources, improve the ways in which our residents can access advice, support and use of data and intelligence to ensure that support is focused where it's needed. The Poverty Action Steering Group will shortly be undertaking a review of the current Poverty Action Plan and associated strategy. This will help consultation engagement exercises with key partners to ensure that we are continuing to prevent and mitigate the impacts of all forms of poverty our residents may be experiencing. This review will also take account of the Dimbleby Report in relation to the National Food Strategy and how we can work with our local partners such as the Durham Christian Partnership, the East Durham Trust, the Bread and Butter Thing and our area action partnerships to identify local support mechanisms that will work for our communities to enable access to fresh, healthy and affordable food. Meetings have already been held with the chief executives of Durham Christian Partnership, the Bread and Butter Thing and a scheduled meeting with the chief executive of the East Durham Trust with the intention to promote the delivery of a comprehensive root and branch food poverty strategy across all of County Durham, which is much needed and has long been overdue. We can also be proud with that the support of government funding, we have delivered many positive interventions over the last 18 months, including providing over 3,000 vulnerable residents with food parcels and personal shopping services through the County Durham Together Community Hub, allocated £1.4 million to community organisations to provide essential food supplies at the start of the pandemic and an additional £1.4 million to aid Covid recovery work in our communities, providing almost 4,000 awards from the council's welfare assistance scheme, providing residents with support including food vouchers, help with energy bills and other essential household items, providing 4.4 worth of food vouchers to over 21,000 of our county's children in receipt of free school meals, providing £70,000 worth of food vouchers to other vulnerable households needing support, awarding 21,000 to feeding families to deliver 700 food parcels to families who were financially struggling during last winter, granted just over £55,000 to food banks across the county to support those in crisis to obtain immediate access to food. And finally, investing £125,000 to establish the Bread and Butter Thing which has enabled five community hubs to set up across the county to help regular redistribute surplus food in an accessible and extremely competitive cost. Going forward, we recognise that there is still need to strengthen our systems to further coordinate and join up services and partners to support residents and make it everybody's business to respond to all forms of poverty and the risk of financial hardship. This last 18 months has been and continues to be challenging for all and I would personally, on behalf of the council, like to extend my sincere thanks to everyone, and that is everyone, officers and volunteers who have worked so diligently during this period to deliver support to all of those in need across County Durham. Thank you. I urge all members to support the amendment.
The amendment will need a seconder?
Councillor Terry Duffy. In setting this amendment, I would like to make members aware of the following. The Covid pandemic has impacted on the income and opportunities of so many of our residents and highlighted the financial fatigue of many financially challenged households across our county and across the whole country. As a matter of course, of concern that we have seen an increase in food insecurity which is having a devastating impact on many households across the county. However, it must be recognised that poverty and economic impacts of the pandemic are bordering issues around food. The joint administration and officers have an aspiration to make it everyone's business to support the people who live in our county. to support the people who live in our county and to help mitigate the impacts and forms of poverty that exist. This includes the access to good quality, affordable housing, good education and access to training opportunities to help develop skills, leading to decent employment and prospects by providing financial support and robust safety net for whoever, for wherever it is needed. I understand that food poverty strategy, as mentioned by councillor Shield, the portfolio holder, could be included as a core agenda item on the Child Poverty Action Group as well as the overarching Poverty Steering Action Committee will be recognised. I am proud to second this endorsement and amendments I urge all members to support it. Thank you.
Councillor Avery?
Thank you, Chairman. Brian Avery, I'm from the Furry Hill Ward. In my area, AP staff and councillors have been greatly involved in distributing holiday hunger money to schoolchildren during the holiday periods for the last two years. Many councillors and volunteers have also been involved in acquiring food from various sources and distributing it on a weekly basis to problem families. Clothes have also been available for these families. Everyone is trying to help each other in these very hard times. The government has given money through furlough schemes to families. They have also given millions of pounds to councils, who in turn have used the APs to administer these funds to our communities in Covid recovery. I honestly cannot say anything more that this government or any other government could have done during these last two years. We are in a worse financial state since World War Two and it's not over yet. Yes, we have to keep pressurising the government for more funds, but we also have to be realistic and realise that eventually all this has to be paid for. I will support the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, member. Councillor Marshall?
Thanks, Chair. Councillor Carl Marshall, Member for Stanley and leader of the Labour Group. Could I firstly start by thanking the cabinet member for his positive response in committing to work with members across the council in producing a food poverty strategy. I think that work will be valuable. I personally have no issues with the majority of the amendment that has been put in. However, I do want to question the legality of the motion because of the words joint administration. What I want is for the Head of Legal to confirm what is the joint administration? Does she have any legal paperwork that backs this up? I think full disclosure of this agreement is absent paramount so that the communities across the county know exactly how this coalition is working. And if we're going to be passing motions and having reports come to council with which acknowledge the joint administration, I think it's only right and proper that the Head of Legal and Democratic Services shares that with all councillors so that we're very clear on who's accountable for the decisions that are taken in this. So I'm happy with the majority of the proposed amendment, but what I'm not happy with is the joint administration unless that document or that paperwork that backs that up is shared with members across the council, which I think is right and proper, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Helen will respond.
Thank you, Councillor Marshall. Slightly off topic of the subject of the motion, so I'd question the relevance of your question. There is an agreement between the groups that have formed the joint administration and I'm sure they wouldn't have any objection to that being shared, but it's a matter to be picked up outside the meeting. I should say actually as well, the cabinet has been appointed in accordance with the constitution and is a matter of public record.
Thank you, Helen. Councillor Bell? Point of order?
The issue I'm raising is around the motion that we're considering at council today. Now, if we're going to acknowledge some sort of agreement that nobody knows what it is as part of a council motion, how can we possibly consider that without any disclosure about what it is? People don't know what they're voting for here and what that language means. And it is relevant to the motion because it's specifically worded in the amendment that's been tabled before us this morning. Thanks, Chair.
Okay, councillor, okay. I think it was quite clear by legal. Can I have councillor Bell now, please?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, perhaps the amendment should have said portfolio holder within the cabinet, because that's what we're talking about, but I think we all know what I mean. I support the amendment. There is a great need for coordination of what's going on and I would refer council to a report that was done by scrutiny in 2016, Holiday Hunger. I don't think most of these recommendations were ever enacted or taken on board by the then-cabinet and I refer council in particular to recommendation four, that corporate director of Children and Young People's Services and the Director of Transformation and Partnerships ensure all information on community projects providing holiday provision to communities is recorded and mapped centrally to ensure a joined-up working of all services and partners. Following the mapping exercise, that a short electronic guide is produced and shared with schools, AAPs and councillors to show where activities are located, types of activities offered, if food is included and cost. There is a great need for coordination of effort and we need to join the dots because it's quite correct to say there was an increase in demand for food and food banks during the pandemic, but there was a massive increase in supply, a massive increase in supply. Many groups that had previously never been involved in providing food got involved, there was a massive response from the public and in many cases across the county, there was a surplus of food such that food banks were advertising for anyone to come and help themselves when they had a surplus. Indeed, in Barnet Castle, some streets had food distributed whether they'd asked for it or not. That contrasts with the position pre-pandemic where people only went to food banks when they'd be referred, referred by doctors, social workers or other professionals. So there is a massive provision out there now. I suspect there's duplication, I certainly think there's inefficiency and we very much need to coordinate that and make sure it's clear so that the support gets to the people that actually needed adequate support, gets to the people that need it. There was also, I think, some confusion on the multiple schemes that government brought forward to support vulnerable people during this period. The government gave money directly to the council to support vulnerable people, the government made, gave money to food vouchers through schools and then also extended free school meals. There's a lot of confusion, I think, in this whole sector and we very much welcome the commitment to the portfolio holder councillor Shield to do further work on this, though it should be acknowledged that he has done substantial work on this area already. Thank you, Chair. So I support the amendment.
Councillor Joplin?
Thank you, Chair. Councillor Joplin, Crook Ward. I would also like to congratulate councillor Shield for the work he will be doing on the distribution because that was one of the things that I wanted to bring up. The Bread and Butter Project, that was started off because of there was an oversupply for food banks. So now they sell their three bags for seven pound fifty and we have one going in Crook, councillor Reed and I, when we get the time on a Friday, we'll go and pack there. I don't think there is an issue with a shortage of food, it is the distribution. And that was one of the points that I think councillor Shield has raised and is one of the points that are very relevant to this. We are running away with the fact that people are hungry, they are hungry, I absolutely agree with that, but the food is there, it just needs to be distributed in a more cohesive manner. There are too many very small associations out there just giving food to the same people, you know, all the time and it needs to be more logistic and we need to get the food to the people that don't come, this is the ones that worry me. There are people that we're not finding and those are the people that we've really got to drill down to and find out where they are and make sure that they are fed. Thank you.
Councillor Wood?
Thank you, Chair. I'm also standing on a point of order about the wording of the amendment. I've listened to the initial point of order that was made, but it doesn't seem to have addressed the main issue is with the first part of it. I mean, I also sort of welcome the positive response in general put forward by the amendment, but ultimately we have a very, our constitution's very clear and our constitution makes no reference to a joint administration, we have a council and we have a cabinet. So I'd submit to you that under our current rules, that's outside the scope of this council to refer something to a body which, under our constitution, doesn't formally exist. And I feel like in order to be in order, it should be making reference to a specific portfolio holder or a specific member of the cabinet. Thank you.
Chair, I've asked and answered, this question's been asked and answered, but for clarity, the amendment reads, "To request that the appropriate portfolio holder within the joint administration involved in dealing with food poverty within the cabinet. The cabinet members have been appointed in accordance with the constitution and I consider the motion, the amendment to be valid."
Councillor Crook?
On a similar vein, Chairman, I have no concerns about the amendment itself, the content of the amendment. I do have concerns to the reference of a joint administration. Regardless of what's been said from the top table, I want to move an amendment to the amendment. I haven't brought a copy of the constitution with us this morning, so I'll need advice on the timing of that. Do we need to talk this amendment through before I can put an amendment to that amendment? I think it's quite simple that we need to remove the term joint administration and replace it with cabinet. That then fits in with the constitution. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you. No more speakers. One, councillor Wilkes? He's got his handset, he's got it on there.
Thank you, Chair. I'm delighted to support this amendment. I'm also delighted at the amount of hard work that councillor Shield has been putting in because I fully support this council and this county having a food poverty strategy, something which apparently for the last decade it hasn't had under the previous administration. And I don't really understand why they're arguing about the wording when we should be getting on with sorting out the strategy.
Councillor McCain?
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to come back on a comment that was made previously by councillor Bell about supply and demand. I felt his tone was ever so slightly dismissive of the problems that some of our families are facing. I want to thank my colleague councillor Miller for bringing this motion in the first place on the basis of the work that he's doing in his ward and the conversations that we all have about how difficult it is for our families. But I just want to put on the record that we shouldn't need to have this conversation in 21st century Britain. Okay, it is great that there are people stepping up to deal with food poverty. I was involved with the council's strategies and plans to alleviate food poverty over the past four years. A hell of a lot of work has gone into it before this day, but quite frankly, people should be able to earn enough money and get enough money from our social safety net that they don't have to come begging their neighbours for food, that they can have the choice of where they get their food from, that they shouldn't have to just take things from a food bank that cover them for three days. They should be able to go to the shops like everyone else and use the money that they have earned, given that 70% of families who are in poverty are working families, they should be able to take the money that they've earned, feed their children, clothe them and put a roof over their heads with heating on. And it's a stunning indictment of this 21st century Britain that they cannot do that.
Councillor Gunn?
Thank you, Chair. I've listened very carefully to the previous speakers and I'm aware of the, obviously very aware of the applaudits to councillor Shield for the work he's done over the last six months in relation to food poverty. I think that we're all aware of what's been happening over, I'm absolutely certain we're all aware of what's been happening in our county during Covid. I want to, I want to thank councillor Angela Sertes, who, the previous portfolio for inclusion, who actually introduced the Bread and Butter Thing into areas of this county and for other members who actually worked extremely hard over activities with food. Can we stop saying holiday hunger, please? We don't want to say holiday hunger, we got rid of that as a term. So I want to thank all of those members who actually worked hard on that. I also, and I want to put this on record, I also have problems with the term joint administration in this amendment. I actually see no need for the amendment. I think that councillor Miller and councillor Hovells bringing this motion was absolutely right to do. I'm pleased that there's a positivity within the amendment, but it's just not necessary. The motion speaks for itself. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Lenny?
Councillor Thornton-Linney from the Deanside Division. I would just like to disagree with something that councillor Joplin said about the food being there. In the not-so-distant past, there were free school meals given out to vulnerable children that contained half peppers, chopped up carrots and they were all stuffed into moneybags and that was something that the government gave out to support the kids over the holidays, over free school meals. And if the food is there and if you are going to amend something that didn't need amending, I hope that they do a better job than what was given out last time round because it's not, it's not okay, it can happen again.
Thank you. Councillor Roberts?
Councillor Mark Idall-Roberts, West Auckland. I very much support this amendment, but I want to talk about this amendment, but unfortunately it seems that some people here want actually to use it for political reasons and not actually for the reasons which are stated in the amendment, which is helping people within our wards and within our county. I find that rather difficult and I hope that we're positive. Many years ago, many years, some years ago, my wife and I, although we were working, when we had paid our rent and our bills and our transport, we had very little money left to feed ourselves. At that time, we made an effort to teach ourselves to cook better and also to use the little money that we had left to buy better from suppliers. So I'd hope within this amendment, within the plan, the strategy that we have, there will be space for education. So if people in food poverty are given food, then if they don't know what to do with it necessarily, and there are people who really don't know how to cook, education there should be available so that they can cook better with the resources that they have. And I hope that within this strategy, there will be room for education as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Sertes? councillor Sirtis.
Thank you, Chair. Chair, I just want to make a point of clarification. councillor Mark Wilks, who suggested that we haven't had a poverty strategy for, into the last administration. This council actually, in 2012, formed a poverty action working group. We've had a strategy and a plan since that time in response to the welfare reform and the ten years of austerity, and that has been working through, and it has changed to the nature of the county and what has happened. And I can see him looking, I can see him sort of looking down and smirking. And Mr Roberts, I think your comments about our residents and community members are condescending. It is not about cooking this food, it is about access to this food, and it's the right thing that we do that we do this. And I don't think that we should remove any member from this room in this, or any member in County Durham with this. This is a basic, fundamental human right. People should have access to food, not how to cook it, access to it, whether it's a raw pepper or a cooked pepper. But it should be adequate, it should be sustainable, and it should be, the government should be ashamed of themselves for not backing the right to food motion. That's what the government should be ashamed of. But what have they done? They've give GPs the authority to prescribe food on the NHS. They shouldn't have to prescribe food, you should be able to go into any shop, any community, and everybody should have enough food to feed their families. I'm not going to say anymore because I'm getting really angry and upset. I care deeply about half a million people in County Durham. I'm absolutely shaken because I am so upset at the comments about we should teach people to cook, we should give them the food in the first place. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. councillor Sexton.
Paul Sexton, Chester Street, South. Chair, could I move to go to a vote, please? It's becoming repetitive, and I think the head of legal and democratic services have made it quite clear about the joint administration wording. This could go on forever. So I wonder if I could move that forward for a vote, please.
Thank you. Member, we're just having a check here. Needs a second. Okay.
John Nicholson, Anfield Plain. I'd like to second that motion.
Thank you, Chair. So under the council procedure rules, if in your view you think the item has been sufficiently discussed, then we put that procedural motion to the vote. So we will vote on whether or not to put the amendment to the vote, if that makes sense. We've had a number of speakers, and we have five others registered to vote, registered to speak, sorry.
Okay, we're going to put... Yes? Wait for the mic.
Thank you, Chair. Just on the point about the amendment, my understanding of the constitution is that what it actually says is that if the chair's satisfied that there has been sufficient discussion, then the motion will be put to a vote. But if the chair isn't, then don't they have the option to bring in the original mover for a right of reply before bringing it to a vote? Thank you.
If the procedural vote, to put it to a vote, carries, then the original mover has the right of reply, yes?
I think it's been well documented here. I think we'll go to the vote.
So for clarity, we are voting on the procedural motion to put the amendment to the vote. So if you want to carry on the debate, vote no. If you want to go straight to the vote, then vote yes. Just give us a couple of minutes for the vote to be set up. The vote's open. So again, we're voting on the procedural vote to put the amendment to the vote. So it's one if you would like to go to the vote, two if you'd like to continue the debate.
Can members, when you walk around the room, wear your masks, please? Can you wear your masks as you move around the room?
Thank you, members. We'll close the vote.
Okay, members. The vote's closed. For, the vote was 64. Against, the vote was 41. There's one abstention. So we'll go to the vote for the amendment, but can I ask councillor Miller first to...
Thanks, Chair. I just want to start by echoing councillor Sirtis' points. Councillor Roberts is very lucky he's got money left over at the end of the month, a lot of people don't. It's not about cooking, it's about the access to the food. The food isn't there, that's what the issue is. So that, very, very patronising. I also challenge councillor Bell's point of there needs to be greater coordination, yet this amendment takes out working across all parties to the joint administration. Surely greater cooperation means working across all parties and not within the joint administration. And I want to make something else clear. By no means was I criticising the AAP officers. I helped, they helped me, and we worked together all last year. This was because members of the community hub have told local food banks in my division that they are stepping down their efforts. That's why I brought this motion forward. It was conflicting information, and that's why the motion's here now. It's nothing to do with the work of the officers. AAP officers work fantastically, as do all officers within the county. That wasn't the point. And it was only politicised by the amendment. The amendment and the motion effectively does the same thing, but you've replaced it by the joint administration. That's politicising it, and I would urge everybody vote against the amendment and for the motion.
Thank you. Pass over to Helen.
Thank you, Chair. So we're now going to vote on the amendment. So it's one in favour, two against, and three to abstain. If you wait for the beep to indicate voting's open.
Sorry, Rob, can you...
Earlier in the debate, Chair, I asked for advice on when I'd be able to table an amendment to the amendment to remove the words "joint administration" and replace them with "cabinet". Now, we've been sticklers for the constitution this morning. I take exception to being told that I don't understand the constitution, yet we've been told here this morning that we're going to accept the motion that refers to something that's unconstitutional. There's no reference in the constitution to the joint administration. Now, I want to put an amendment to the amendment before we move to the vote that those words, "joint administration", are removed and replaced with a cabinet. Now, I asked for advice on when I would be able to do that. I haven't received that yet, Chair.
councillor Sexton.
I'm happy to answer the procedural issue. Councillor Crute will recall at the outset of item nine, I explained the rules of debate. As part of that, I explained that only one amendment can be moved at a time. So we'd have to deal with this amendment before you can move that amendment to delete the words "joint administration". So if, after this vote, the amendment is carried, that's the point at which you can move to delete those words, if it's not agreed, you know, as a matter of course, by the movers and seconders of the amendment.
Okay. Very quickly. And wait, wait, wait for the mic. Wait for the microphone, please.
Sorry, Chair, just a point of order. I believe councillor Miller requested a recorded vote when this came to the vote earlier. I just wanted to flag that up. Thank you.
Councillor Miller requested a recorded vote on his motion. There wasn't a request for a recorded vote on the amendment. If there is to be a request for a recorded vote, it requires the support of 10 members. The names will be recorded, and the way in which they vote will be recorded in the minutes. Right, so we are now voting on the amendment. It is one if you're voting in favour, two against, three to abstain. Wait for the beep to vote, for the vote to be open, please. Vote's open. Vote's closed.
Excuse me, members. For the amendment, 62. Against the amendment, 44. There was no abstentions. It now becomes the substantial motion. Does anyone there require, anyone wants to speak on it before we go to the vote again? Okay, members.
I'm not going to string this out because I actually agree with what was said earlier, that, you know, politics has dragged this out far too long. It's politics that's brought us to this position in the first place, and it's politics that's brought this meaningless amendment to the motion that was put forward this morning. That's by the by. I want to talk about the constitution, seems to be the topic of the day. Now, we've been asked to agree an amendment which refers to a joint administration, which is not referred to once in the council's constitution. I'm deeply unsettled about supporting any motion or any amendment that refers to a joint administration. Regardless of what's being said, there's no reference in the council's constitution to a joint administration. And if we fully agree in accountability, we can't trace that accountability through the council's constitution if it refers to a joint amendment, sorry, a joint administration. So what I'm suggesting, Chair, is that those words, "joint administration", are removed and replaced with the word "cabinet". Thank you, Chair.
Secondor, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. councillor Kevin Shaw from Dordon, formerly supporting councillor Crute on his amendment here. And can I just remind members that only a few moments ago, the deputy leader himself stated that it should be removed from the motion?
councillor Wilkes.
I must have pressed the wrong button there, I wasn't planning on saying anything else. But I'll just point out that councillor Sirtis suggested that we already had a food action plan from 2012, which does beg the question why this motion was brought in the first place. Perhaps now we can actually... Perhaps now we can actually, as a joint administration, have an effective one.
Helen, Helen, point of order. Point of order?
I never said food action plan actually, I said poverty action plan, which included food. Thank you very much.
Okay, okay. Councillor Sexton?
Yeah, thanks Chair. I just want the head of legal and democratic services to give clarification. I thought I put a move to go to a vote. Should all of this not have been done before? What's the legal standpoint? Because we could be here all day and I've got an appointment this afternoon. Thank you.
We dealt with the procedural motion to put the debate on the amendment to a vote, which we've done. That amendment became the substantive motion, which needs to be voted on as the substantive motion, so it is still capable of amendment. So we need, now we've got this amendment on the table, we need to, we need to deal with it, so. Councillor Miller?
Councillor Miller?
Yeah, I just want to, there seems to be a lot of giggles and laughs going on over here. We're actually talking about a really serious issue, so if you want to have a laugh, this isn't the time and the place.
Members? Councillor Wood?
Thank you Chair, I will be very brief. I'll be voting in favour of this amendment. I think we've heard from both sides of the chamber today, a lot of support for actually working on, on this strategy. I think there's clearly a great deal of contention about the wording of the amendment itself, the original amendment, sorry. The, I think what we're looking at, I don't think we're a million miles away from having a unanimous motion here. I think it's purely about that wording and making sure that if it is a resolution by full council, that ultimately it's done, it's done through the cabinet and full council in line with our constitution. So what I'd suggest to other members, is if this amendment can be accepted, it may well be unanimous motion that's passed by this council today. So if that's what you want, I'd urge you to vote for the amendment. Thank you.
Councillor McKeown?
I'd like to move to a vote on the amendment and call for a name vote. Thank you.
You need a seconder councillor? Councillor Wood?
Chair, just for clarity, so we've had a, we've had a motion without notice to bring this amendment to a vote, but we actually don't have anybody else registered to speak. So rather than put a procedural motion to the vote, which might be unnecessary, with your leave, my suggestion would be that if there is nobody else registered to speak, we invite councillor Shield as the mover of the motion to give his right of reply and then put it to the vote to save some time, otherwise we're going to do a procedural vote that we perhaps don't need, given that we don't have a queue of speakers waiting.
Okay. Is that acceptable, members? Councillor Shield?
Thank you Chair. I'm saddened by the sedantics of, of politics from whichever group. The wording was approved on the amendment by the head of democratic services. She has verified that the joint administration is a bona fide group. Whilst it's not in the constitution, we have got a memorandum of understanding. Therefore, the whole aspect of this is to provide a food strategy, a root and branch food strategy, to get to the root cause of people's problems, not just supply them with food. So I'm sorry, but I am insisting that the amendment stands as approved by the head of democratic services. Thank you.
We'll have a vote on the amendment.
So this is voting to delete the words joint administration from the motion. It's one if you're in favour, two against, three to abstain. Please wait for the beep. Oh, sorry, we had, we had a request for a name vote, didn't we? Did we have ten members stand up?
Yes, we did.
Thank you. One in favour, two against, or three to abstain? Yeah, vote's open. Closing the vote.
Members, for the motion, a hundred and five, against the motion, zero, one abstention. The motion is carried. Can I now move to the second motion? I understand that the second motion for today's meeting submitted by councillor Stacey Denali has been withdrawn. Is that the case councillor? Yes, it is the case, thank you. Therefore, we'll move straight to the motion. Councillor Sirtis, could you please move your motion?
Thank you Chair. Councillor Angela Sirtis, representing the Easington Division, also Thematic Labour Lead for Communities in Inclusion. You hear the words universal credit and the words themselves make people cringe. I welcomed the decision by government to give the twenty pound uplift and then immediately despaired when discovering that this did not extend to legacy benefit recipients, most of which are disabled, single parents or over fifty. However, the decision to remove this uplift now is just simply not right. We need to ensure that our vulnerable people in all of our communities are supported when they need it the most. County Durham has increasing levels of poverty. Child poverty is one in three in some of our constituencies. Food banks have not seen a decrease during the pandemic. Fuel poverty is increasing with the new domestic fuel hikes. For instance, I received my Ross recent statement and my property is going to increase by two hundred pounds, it's only made my husband. We're constantly bombarded with images of grinning conservative ministers and MPs pausing at food banks while full-time key workers queue for handouts in the background. Billions of pounds have been wasted on hopeless track and trace, useless P P E, underfunded N H S and schools, while Tory ministers simply refuse to address in-work poverty by retaining the twenty pound universal credit uplift at this time. I heard Theresa Coffey state on the T V recently that people working who are in receipt of this uplift can work a couple of more hours to make it up. In my eyes, a simple statement made by someone who clearly does not have any knowledge of how U C works, how employers work or the working population. Where do employers find the extra hours? Where does the extra money come from for childcare? More importantly, the need to understand that nine hours extra are actually needed in additional work to meet the uplift amount, not just two. And just to note that the vast majority of the increase in the welfare costs to D W P has not come from this uplift. It's actually come from the increase in the caseload during the pandemic months, up to a hundred percent. It's a national scandal, it's not just to County Durham, it's a national. The recent Northfield Foundation study explored the evidence of the impact of child poverty in the first few years of life, revealing that childhood poverty can significantly affect child's cognitive skills, physical, social and emotional development throughout childhood and into adulthood. What is more important than ensuring that our children and young people are looked after? That their parents and guardians can afford food to heat their homes and put clothes on their backs. These are our future and this is impacting their development in education and into employment. On Monday, I was in economy and enterprise and we heard about a skills strategy being revisited and one of the key challenges facing the labour market at the moment is actually poverty and deprivation. Our residents were struggling prior to the pandemic and this has been researched and documented. We have a higher unemployment rate than the national average. We haven't moved forward as fast as other regions of the coun, of the country. In reality, ten years of austerity, welfare reforms and now the removal of the twenty pound U C uplift is just hammering our working class. The majority of the recipients of U C uplift are working and the others are relying on this twenty pound to see them through this Covid pandemic, which we are clearly not through yet. I fear that we have not yet seen all the impacts to come. Removal of the evictions ban, the end to furlough and now the removal of this U C uplift not only affecting the individuals and households in receipt of it, but also affecting our economy, which we are so desperately trying to recover. We're heading towards a cliff edge and I just simply don't know how we will support all of our people in the communities. I don't apologise for bringing this motion here and will not be withdrawing it. I support the campaigns by the Trussell Trust, North East Child Poverty Commission and various other recognised organisations against the removal of this uplift. This council in March supported the Right to Food campaign, of which retaining the twenty pound uplift was part of it. So I really urge every member here to once again support their residents and agree this motion. The motion, this council condemns the decision by government to remove the universal credit twenty pound uplift. Thank you Chair.
Thank you member. Need a seconder please? Yes, at the back of the hall?
Thank you Chair, I formally second the motion put forward by councillor Sirtis, but also request to reserve the right to speak further in the debate. Thank you.
Does any member wish to speak on the motion? Councillor Adcock Foster please?
Thank you Chair, councillor Adcock Foster, representing the Merton and Donnydale Division. The UK is facing a crisis on many fronts. Covid, the biggest public health crisis for a generation, is still rife in our communities. The energy crisis will see bills soar for gas and electricity this winter and child poverty and food poverty remain a scar on our country. Demand for emergency food aid is already at unsustainable levels within my own village of Merton served by four food banks. I pay tribute to all the volunteers for their hard work and support, but they will tell you the day they look forward to is when there is no more need for their service. Our charities and churches do an amazing job in my community and I know they will be the ones supporting families and children pushed into hardship after losing over a thousand pounds a year for their household budgets. The decision to cut universal credit was always a cruel policy, but to go ahead with a cut at this time is immoral, as the government clearly know the damage and the hardship they will create, with ministers warning of a difficult winter ahead. In the midst of rising food and energy prices, the Conservative Party must change course and protect families in our communities. The cut to universal credit is a policy of economic self-harm and shows the government is, in reality, levelling down local economies like County Durham. Over fifty thousand families will be affected in County Durham, taking over fifty million a year out of the local economy. How will the loss of over fifty million in County Durham help to create jobs and growth on high streets like Woods Terrace in Merton and surrounding towns and villages? I welcome today's motion, which is simple and direct. The Durham County Council condemns the cut to universal credit. I hope it gains the cross-party support it deserves, so collectively as a council, we send a clear message to Westminster that we stand against the government damaging our economy and creating hardship and suffering in our country. This cut reinforces deprivation and widens the economic divide between the County Durham and the rest of our country. I wholeheartedly support this motion and I hope you will too. Thank you.
Thank you member. Councillor Wilson?
Councillor Wilson, Satterton Division. In a, in a previous job, I worked in the forerunners to this. In a previous job, I worked in the forerunners to this, working around child tax credit and working tax credit. And when you see the amount of work that these people are doing and that this support is vital to them, because it isn't just your bits and pieces, but it is also for people who have families, who have disabilities, children with disabilities, who need to care for them as well. This is an incredibly cruel cut from the government, make no doubt about it, and the fact that we should say we condemn this because it is something that should be condemned, not merely disagreed with.
Thank you Member. Councillor Crewe?
Thank you Chair, I'm speaking in support of the motion and I won't say a great deal because I think the simplicity of the motion speaks for itself. You've got working families in County Durham struggling to get by because of food shortages, soaring energy prices, imminent tax hikes that have broken Tory promises and now working families on universal credit, many of them key workers from the health, education, retail and local government sectors who've helped us safely through the pandemic and are going to be hit with a twenty pound removal from universal credit. Clear message here Chair is that the Tories are not on your side, but deliberately making life difficult for working people. So I think we need to make a stand here and I agree with Councillor Wilson. It's no good disagreeing with them, it's no good challenging them, no good questioning the government, they need to be condemned for what they're doing. And I invite every member in this room this morning to stand with the Labour group in condemning the government for what they're doing to working class people in this country and in Durham County in particular and support this motion. Thank you Chair.
Councillor Wilkes?
Thank you Chair. In July, I got agreement from the Joint Administration for it to write to government asking them to retain the universal credit uplift. That letter stated that the universal credit uplift was introduced to help people during the pandemic and has had significant positive impact in County Durham. However, with many people still struggling, it was clear that phasing out the uplift in September would have a significant impact on hard-working County Durham residents. That letter went on to say that scrapping the twenty pound uplift would result in a loss of over fifty-five million pounds from the County Durham economy over the course of the following year, impacting directly on over fifty-two thousand residents and their families. Further, that it would put severe strain on many low-income families already struggling and went on to say that whilst welcoming the efforts of counties' MPs to bring public and private sector jobs to County Durham, that the impact was going to be significant. Sadly, the government ignored that letter. There's still time for them to change direction and I sincerely hope that they do. This is going to impact not just on residents but on this council too. It's going to increase our costs and there's a high likelihood that it will end up costing more money for our country than it will save. That makes no sense whatsoever.
Thank you Member. Councillor Miller?
Thanks Chair, I'd like to request a name vote on this motion as well. I'll be in support of the motion. I agree with my colleagues, we absolutely need to take a stronger stance rather than disagree. I'm a bit confused about Councillor Wilkes's comments and yet the amendment waters down the motion, surely it should condemn it if those are the feelings of the Joint Administration?
Chair, if I could just give a point of clarity, we haven't actually got an amendment on this item as yet.
Thank you Helen. Councillor Bell?
Thanks Chair, yes, I too was waiting for amendment, perhaps it's not being brought, I don't know. If it isn't being brought, the Labour speakers on this give very mixed messages, don't they? On the one hand, they call for cross-party support, on the other hand, they say the Conservative government is deliberately harming our working people. How can you possibly expect cross-party support on a motion like that? And indeed, how can you really expect anybody to support a motion that does nothing but condemns the decision by the government? You aren't even telling the government you're condemning it. Do you think the government is actually sitting there watching for your minutes of this meeting? Do you seriously think anybody is going to be sitting listening to a meeting of this quality this morning to see what our opinion is? You aren't even writing to the government to tell them what you think. You aren't even writing to them to tell them why you think it. The amendment, if it were moved, does at least purport of what the council would do about it. And frankly, I think that anything that just comes to this council in language of condemnation without saying, A, what you want the people in charge to do about it, or B, what the council can do about it, is a waste of members' time. Thank you Chair.
Who says? Is that you Rob? Okay.
Chair members will remember, I brought a motion to this council back in July condemning social care. It was the one where Richard Bell denied there was any social care crisis in County Durham. In that motion, I asked this council to write to government to raise our concerns. Councillor Bell advised, advised that would be a waste of time writing to government because it wouldn't make any difference. And now he's saying we should do exactly that.
Okay.
That's the point of clarification Chair, I need to make that point.
Councillor Shield?
Councillor Shield, Meronsley and Ledgate Division, portfolio holder for the Equality and Inclusion. This amendment, it's another what you would call semantics on wording, but this council disagrees, questions and challenges the decision by national government to remove the temporary universal credit uplift of twenty pounds. But, we will engage with all key partners and stakeholders to collectively work together to address and try and minimise the shortfall impact of household income preventing undue financial hardship. We are fully aware of the lifeline that twenty pound per week uplift in universal credit has provided to many households across County Durham during what has been a very challenging time. We know from feedback from our residents that the additional twenty pound uplift has made a significant difference to the many financially vulnerable households across our county, who have been struggling with the impact of the restrictions in place to control the Corona pandemic. Letters from the leaders of the Joint Administration, and I'll say again, Joint Administration or Coalition as the opposition members often refer to, were sent to the Prime Minister and Chancellor of the Exchequer on July the thirteenth, I repeat, July the thirteenth, as well as letters from our Health and Wellbeing Board were sent to ministers and also letters from the County Durham Advice Partnership to highlight the awareness how the withdrawal of the uplift would affect the residents and economy of County Durham. This comes at a time when residents are presented with continuing concerns over their household finances, particularly as the furlough payment, end of mortgage repayment holidays and the eviction van are fully removed, plus the potential increase in the price of utilities. The government has set out areas of policy that will present opportunities for access to funding and powers to deliver economic strategy. These include the Levelling Up Fund, the Shared Prosperity Fund and other opportunities such as the Future Towns Fund and funding for Covid recovery. Durham County Council have set out priorities and expectations for supporting level up our communities and the economy as the county emerges from the devastating impact of the pandemic. Key to our recovery, both locally and nationally, is to support people into better paid employment and to build a strong economy whilst continuing to provide support to those households who are suffering financial hardship. Our aim as a council is to consider what further support will be needed for households during this time and to use all our resources, all our resources effectively to enable us to target what support to where it's most needed. We will work with our key partners to identify those most in need and provide what help and assistance we can to those low-income households who need additional support, developing local solutions whilst investing in regeneration which brings more and better paid jobs. We will work tirelessly with our residents to protect their safety, security and wellbeing as we move further into recovery, providing advice, guidance and providing financial support to assist people as they adapt to the withdrawal of the uplift. It is noted that the motion submission uses understandable emotive wording, but I do recognise most sincerely the issues, more than most having worked in food banks and advice service for nearly fifteen years. I however recommend and urge all members...
One minute Member, one minute.
I recommend all members to support the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, need a second for that amendment?
Thank you Chair, Catherine Rooney, Constable North Division. I formally second the amendment and reserve the right to come back.
Thank you. Councillor Mulholland?
Many of us across the county will have many residents in our individual wards who rely on universal credit and there's no doubt about the hardships that Covid nineteen's brought to our communities. I think it's morally wrong that the government has chosen to remove this uplift and I do stand by the wording of condemning the decision. If we are serious as a council about representing working people in our wards in our area who rely upon this, who rely upon the council for this, then we must be resolute in our resolve on this. So I stand by the motion as it was originally with the words condemns. I don't agree with the move to sort of dilute the wording down. We must be resolute as a council on this matter, so I do stand by that and I'd support voting against the amendment.
Thank you Member. Councillor Tinsley?
Thank you Chair, Fraser Tinsley, Wellington and Holwick Division. Let's not beat around the bush here. You know this is going to hammer people you represent and you're sat there and you're not doing something about it, which is to condemn it, and that's what you should be doing here today. Now, I've looked at the amendment that's come forward from Councillor Shields and I'm not going to back this because it needs to be condemned. It absolutely needs to be condemned. This is going to take over a thousand pounds out of people's pockets who are least able to afford this in County Durham and no engagement with stakeholders is going to put that back in their pockets. They need this money. Now, we have government ministers going on talking about, yeah, oh, they have to work a couple of extra hours, get a couple of extra hours, that'll make up the difference. That's nonsense and they know that. To make up a twenty pound shortfall per week in universal credit, you have to work over nine hours because the effective tax rate for these people who are doing the right thing, trying to get extra hours, is sixty-three percent. It's an extra day and more they have to work to get twenty quid back in the pocket. So I condemn this, I ask you and everybody in this room representing people in County Durham who are going to get hammered to condemn it as well. I won't be supporting the amendment. Thank you Chair.
Thank you Member. Councillor Marshall?
Thanks Chair, I find myself in a little bit of a strange position here that I'm standing up in support of some of the things that Councillor Bell said and also some of the things Councillor Wilkes said, so you might want to write this down in your diary as a day that might be remembered in history at some point. I think on Councillor Bell's point, I agree that there's never going to be cross-party support for this because the motion is to condemn the party that he has elected to represent. I totally understand that. I agree with Councillor Wilkes in the sentiment in the original motion, which he made to full council and then withdrew, maybe he's at the behold of his Tory masters. I think Chair, for me, a lot of the issues around this motion have been stated this morning. Our communities are being hit harder than most communities around the country. We're going to see council tax going up, we've seen the burden of taxation being passed from central government to local government, social care precept, energy bills spiralling out of control, food costs increasing. We've seen a report from the Nuffield Trust over the past couple of weeks that shows that child poverty in this county is increasing. Chair, all of these things are a direct result of decisions made by this government and we've all got to accept that. In life, we have choices. Chair, today, we have a very simple motion about whether members in here support their communities and agree with the decisions and the choices being made by the government. Now, I know some of you who are members of the Conservative Party won't be able to stomach that and I acknowledge that. We had Tory MPs from County Durham arguing against these proposals for weeks leading up to the vote. We had them on television hours before the vote in Parliament, but still walking through the lobbies to back the government. Total hypocrisy at its finest. Chair, this is a very simple motion, you either stand with our working people in County Durham and support them by condemning this cut and showing that this council is onside with the residents of County Durham, or...
One minute.
Thanks Chair, or you back the plans by the government and the detrimental and the catastrophic impact that will have on every part of our community across this entire county. Chair, I'd urge everybody to vote against the amendment because to dilute the motion, to service the needs of the Conservative Party, I'd ask them to vote against the government and condemn it and I'd also request all members to nail the colours to the mast and request a name vote on this Chair. Thank you.
Thank you Member. Councillor McKeon?
Yeah, before I start, I'd like to thank the council staff who've been providing us with microphones today, I hope you're getting your steps in, your counter. Looking at this amendment, disagrees, questions and challenges, I'm sorry, it's not a seminar, this is people's lived experiences in poverty, this is whether or not they can pay their heating bills in a cold winter. We're tutting about this with this amendment when we should be condemning it. I'm going to run through some figures very quickly for you. I pulled them off this morning from the House of Commons library. It's the number of universal credit claimants in every constituency in County Durham. Bishop Auckland, two thousand nine hundred. City of Durham, two thousand three hundred and five. Easington, three thousand five hundred and twenty-five. North Durham, three thousand and sixty-five. North West Durham, two thousand eight hundred and five. And Setchfield, two thousand six hundred and eighty-five. That's seventeen thousand two hundred and eighty-five individual claims, not to mention all the dependents who rely on that income as well. If you times that by twenty, it's three hundred and forty-five thousand seven hundred pounds a week out of our economy. When we're talking about this, it's over one million pounds a month that goes out just in the twenty pound uplift to universal credit. Now, looking at this amendment, there's a theme running through not just the so-called Joint Administration but also the three Tory MPs who abstained on this vote in Parliament. On the actual vote itself, they're running scared of the government even when the government is impoverishing our county in such an obvious way. Now, if Durham's Tories, Lib Dems and independents aren't going to speak unequivocally for the people of County Durham when we're losing over a million pounds a month directly from our economy, let alone looking at the human cost of this, then honestly, what good is everyone in this room? This is the moment when we stand up and we say, actually, the people of County Durham come first and I hope that you will join us in voting down this amendment and voting for the amendment that actually puts the way I know we all feel. Let's have a bit of courage. Come on colleagues.
Thank you Member. Councillor Mullay?
Thank you Chair, councillor Pete Malloy, Spennymoor Division. I'm looking through this through residents' eyes. The original motion just says basically that we don't agree with what the government's doing about removing the temporary twenty pounds universal uplift and that's all well and good. However, a resident will come to us and say, alright, you condemned it, that's great, but what are you going to do? You haven't told us that you're going to do anything else and that's the problem I've got with the original motion. I would have liked, honestly, to have backed the original motion if it would have been added instructions to it or actions on how it could go further rather than just wagging the finger at government. The amendment takes us much further on things that this council would do and that's why I support the amendment and I request others do also, thank you.
Thank you, member.
Get the steps in. You know, it would be fascinating to be a fly on the wall when all this stuff's put together by the make-do and amend coalition. Was it the Tories who questioned? Is it the Liberals who disagree? Is it the independents who challenge or do, is it just pick and mix for you to put on yellow flags next time round that you really were against it but you're really not? Suck it up. You support a Tory administration, you support a Tory government, either say where you are or just keep hiding. You can't be your own opposition on everything. This twenty pound is a disgrace. Twenty pounds when you've gotten out is a lot of money and I urge you all to look at your conscience and just say, let's make a stand against the government on a foolish policy and be done with it. Thank you.
Thank you, member.
Thanks Chair, I'd like to thank councillor Marshall for the very limited agreement assured with me there, I don't think it's worthy of a diary entry but I appreciate it anyway. I've heard a lot of very impassioned speeches from Labour members but you're not MPs, this is not the House of Commons, we're not sitting on green benches, we're sitting on grey chairs in Spennymoor Leisure Centre. And just to condemn a government decision, that's what your parliamentary party's paid for, that's what MPs are paid for. To condemn a government decision without proposing any action from what this council would do to ameliorate it is frankly just political posturing. And we've heard a lot of lectures about how much you care about the people of County Durham and how much we don't. Well, we actually do care and we care demonstrably more because we are about doing things and action, not just talk, so you can put it on your Facebook page after a meeting, we're about doing action and actually working better across the county with partners, with agencies to try and better the conditions of the people of County Durham. That is the significant difference between all the parties of the joint administration and the Labour Party. We're about action and helping, you're about talk and posturing. Thank you Chair. Unsurprisingly, I will be voting for the amendment.
Thank you, member.
Somebody's booing, somebody's booing all the time. Person who is doing the booing, if you could stop please, otherwise it's a meeting where you don't boo, you'll be asked to leave the meeting. So if you could stop booing please, otherwise you will be removed from this meeting. councillor Adam?
Thank you Chair, I stand here to reject this amendment being proposed, especially in terms of councillor Bell's statement where he believes this is a waste of time, a waste of time to debate important issues that affect our community, our most vulnerable in our community. Shame on councillor Bell. He says he cares but he actually doesn't show that he cares by speaking in favour or speaking certainly and disputing with his government that this is actually wrong. I've heard nothing from him at this particular moment in time where he condemns or even disagrees with the statement of withdrawing the twenty pound uplift. Plus also in terms of the amendment, it does not propose how it's going to minimise the impact on our people. Don't you think that's what we and the previous motions were talking about, that we've tried to minimise the impact on our community? This amendment does not make any proposals to minimise the impact on our community. So Chair, in County Durham as members have already said, we have twenty-three thousand children on universal who are living in poverty and most of those are working families. These individuals and families are part of the NHS staff, nurses, care workers, shop workers who we clapped and demonstrated a gratitude during the pandemic. Now their incomes are being reduced by this government. Most in this chamber probably consider themselves as the lucky ones. But out there, children and families living and growing up in poverty and low income households experience many disadvantages that can have a negative impact and social consequences. We now see that the inflation has soared to three point two percent, its highest level in nine years, the cost of the hike in national insurance contributions, food, energy and essential items are increasing month by month. If it was right to uplift universal credit back in twenty twenty, when people were struggling, it is surely right to continue to support them through this further period of uncertainty and cost of living increases. This council has an ambition and vision to shape County Durham. This ambition requires support from all stakeholders, from all councils and councillors here. This is why we are asking for this uplift, this reduction in uplift to be condemned by this particular council. This amendment does not achieve that in any shape or form. We want to improve the lives and urge you all not to sit on your hands, we urge you all not to sit on your hands but to stand tall, raise your hand high and actually reject this particular motion. Thank you Chair.
Thank you, member. councillor Mulholland, you have spoken already on this motion, I'm afraid you can't speak anymore. So can we go to councillor Leane please? Charlton Leane? Sorry about the pronunciation.
Charlton Lenny from Deanside Division. I just wanted to ask councillor Bell a question, so considering that the government doesn't listen to communities, doesn't listen to the people that live there, they're not listening to us, do they listen to MPs? And if there is a list of people that do listen, could you circulate that? Because at the minute, we are just speaking to nobody.
Just one second. Members, we're almost at the time for motions, nobody else registered to speak. Councillor Rooney, you reserved the right to speak. Do you want to speak now before I give councillor Sirtis the right to reply? Councillor Rooney, you okay? In that case, we'll go to councillor Sirtis. Oh, sorry, councillor Sirtis, can I just have one second? Yes?
Thank you Chair, just very quickly, didn't councillor Mulholland speak on the original motion, not on the amendment? Okay, if I'm wrong that's fine.
No, he was the first person to speak after the amendment was seconded.
Alright, thank you, apologies.
Okay councillor Sirtis?
Thank you Chair. Chair, I believe that my motion, original motion with the use of the word condemn is a key motion, I think that the amendment actually negates the purpose of the motion. The other thing that I will say is, whilst colleagues have suggested that we're not doing anything with the motion and this one actually does talk about us doing something, we're already doing it out in our communities, we've heard about that now, we're supporting these people who are currently on the twenty pound uplift, so I disagree with those comments. I don't accept the amendment at all, I think it weakens it, it negates it and it doesn't send that strong message for our residents of County Durham, so I will be opposing the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you members, I will now pass over to Helen who will go through the motion.
Thank you Chair, we did have a request for a named vote on this item, so if there's ten members in support of that please. The way which members vote will be recorded in the minutes, thank you. We are voting in favour of the amendment, one for, two against, three to abstain.
Sorry, yes, can we?
Point of order Chair, I believe the councillor Sirtis stated that the amendment to the motion negated it and as such that would render it out of order as I understand it. Can we please have clarification as to whether or not the amendment does negate the original motion to an extent that it would render it out of order? Thank you Chair.
I don't consider that the amendment does negate the motion, it expresses a view on the position of universal credit which is different to the original motion but it's not either in support of universal credit or not to condemn. So in my view, it doesn't negate the motion, it's a different expression of opinion but So we're voting for the amendment, it's one for, two against or three to abstain.
Okay members, for the amendment fifty-nine, against forty-seven, no abstentions. The amendment is carried and becomes the substantive motion. In view of the time, I propose that we move straight to the vote on it. Members, agreed? Agreed, straight to the vote. Thank you.
Thank you Chair, so we're now voting on this as the substantive motion, it's one in favour, two against, three to abstain. Is councillor Pringle still here please?
Okay members, for the motion fifty-seven, against forty-four, three abstentions, the motion is therefore carried. We have run out of time to deal with the last motion on the agenda and it will be carried forward till the next meeting. Can we then move on to item ten, questions for members? Two questions have been submitted for today's meeting, can I ask councillor Jonathan Elmer to ask his question please?
Thank you Chair, councillor Jonathan Elmer from Brandon Division. Question is addressed to councillor Mark Wilkes, a Cabinet portfolio holder for neighbourhoods and climate change. On the thirtieth of June twenty twenty-one, the House of Commons Environmental Audit Committee released their report, biodiversity in the UK, bloom or bust, that states since nineteen seventy, there's been a sixty-eight percent decrease in population sizes of mammals, birds, amphibians, reptiles and fish and fifteen percent of UK species are threatened with extinction. Of the G7 countries, the UK has the lowest level of biodiversity remaining. Ecosystems might be considered as the planet's life support system. crash of species and habitats that collectively form our natural systems. There's no question that we're currently experiencing an ecological emergency. The situation remains, despite the excellent work that the council has delivered in relation, for example, to the North Pennines AONB, the Heritage Coast, the coalfields restoration work and many other worthy projects. Councillor Wilks, will the council declare an ecological emergency, then review services to ensure cessation of any activities that negatively impact upon ecosystems, and to identify opportunities to enhance ecosystems, and report back to the Environment and Sustainable Communities' Overview and Scrutiny Committee regarding the measures needed to address this emergency and their implications to the council? In short, will the council adopt the same approach to tackling the ecological emergency as it has for the related climate emergency?
Thank you. Can I ask councillor, for the portfolio holder of the cabinet, councillor Mark Wilks, please?
Thank you, Chair. First of all, I'd like to thank councillor Elmer for his question and for the obvious passion he shows for our natural environment, our ecology and our climate, and which comes through in every word of his question. It's a passion that I share. The ecological systems that maintain our planet are under serious, severe pressure, of that there is no doubt. The issue is well-evidenced and well-understood, and the question of how that relates to County Durham and the activities of this council is a valid and appropriate one to be raising. The landscapes and natural habitat of County Durham, from the Heritage Coast, through our rivers, our dales and valleys and the uplands of the Pennines, are some of our key assets. This is not only in their contribution to global environmental health, but also in making Durham an attractive place to live, work, visit and in which to thrive. While there has been historically significant improvements in our post-industrial landscape and wildlife habitats, councillor Elmer is correct to point out that there remains much more to do. There's a lot to consider in this question, with some big, important issues being raised. And in order to give these issues proper consideration, I will commit to bring a report to Cabinet in October to set out a way forward on the questions that are raised with a view to declaring an ecological emergency once we are cognisant of the implications for the council. Our goal will be to tackle the ecological challenges we face as a county, making sure that we protect and improve our wildlife and our landscapes. It is my view that we should embed into everything we do a consideration not only of our climate impact, but also our ecological impacts, and to promote improvement and protection of our county's environment, both as a council and with every household and every business. And I look forward to working with councillor Elmer and fellow councillors to achieve this goal. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Member. Okay. The second question is from councillor Bill Moist. Can I invite Bill to ask his question, please?
Thank you, Chair. On joining the Joint Administration, I was appointed as Chair of the Economy and Enterprise OSC, and at the July meeting of the Economy and Enterprise OSC, the Regeneration Economy and Growth Service grouping report was presented, along with the Performance Management Report for the year ending March 2021, where it was highlighted that the County Durham economy was worth £9 billion. However, also highlighted the economy was operating at 25% less than the UK average. Therefore, the County Durham economy should be £12 billion, even if we only achieved the UK average level. At that same Economy and Enterprise OSC meeting, the minutes of the County Durham Economic Partnership Meeting, held on the 5th of May 2021, was presented, where it was stated and accepted that, and I quote, 'There is no economic strategy for the county and associated programmes and pipeline of both physical infrastructure and revenue projects, nor has there ever been', not my words. 'It has been determined that the core aim of more and better jobs from the County Durham vision seems to be no more than a wish and a hope, with no real job creation strategy in place. In summary, County Durham has consistently fallen behind the rest of England in its economic activity rate, employment rate and self-employment rate. At the same time, it exceeds the rest of England in terms of unemployment and long-term sick economically inactive population. Can I seek assurances that this council will support the administration to deliver an all-encompassing, strong, vibrant, varied and successful economy, with specific targets for job creation within a planned, structured economic strategy to help Durham County Council deliver real more and better jobs and real improved economic benefits to the people of County Durham?' Thank you, Chair.
Can I now ask the Cabinet portfolio holder, councillor Scott, to respond, please?
Yes, can I thank councillor Moist for this question and the time he has taken to research the topic? Sadly, Durham's relatively poor economic performance has remained a consistent and perpetuating feature of the county, and one which the last administration appeared to accept. This county's fortunes have not been revived by previous governments of any political colour, not even by Labour when Tony Blair was Prime Minister. The job before us, the Joint Administration, is to swiftly and decisively take action to boost the economy, create jobs, enable prosperity and ensure that County Durham can realise its true potential in a fair and equitable way. We have inherited a number of strategies, including a regeneration strategy, housing strategy and skills strategy, and the area is also part of the wider regional arrangements that include the joint transport strategy and the strategic economic plan. However, I can confirm that County Durham does not and never has had an economic strategy. I'll just let you think about that. I am able to advise that I intend to bring a report to Cabinet this year, seeking approval to widely consult on and develop a strategy that will underpin economic growth in County Durham over the coming years, and support wider updates on key issues such as skills, transport and housing. The report to Cabinet will provide a detailed overview of the current economic position in the county, particularly to understand our strengths, opportunities and areas where we must be stronger to give our communities the best opportunity. This will provide a clear foundation on which we can build strategic plans, implement economic and social interventions and deliver specific outcomes that will see the economy bridge the gap with the national indicators. Under Labour, we've seen plenty of unsubstantiated soundbites around job creation, most famously the Akeley Heads announcement of 6,000 jobs, which quickly turned into 4,000 jobs in the blink of an eye. I dare say, if they were still in control, it would now be 2,000. Our new economic strategy will provide the evidence base and ambition that will help the county and its partners to secure regional and national funding, and powers to help drive economic growth will be closely developed with businesses, communities and the voluntary sector. It will ensure that we are ready when opportunities arise and that our voice is heard both regionally and nationally. And we're not waiting for a strategy, we're seizing opportunities like City of Culture, like Leveling Up, which we are working on on a cross-party platform. We won't always win, but we will always be in the game. This will be an intensive piece of work that will take some time to complete, and in the meantime, I'll also ask Cabinet to approve an economic statement to help articulate our challenges and ambitions. We will use this statement until the full strategy is in place later in 2022. An important part of the process to develop the strategy is ensuring that we have a series of conversations with a wide group of stakeholders, and I will provide further details of this to Cabinet. The strategy will need the buy-in of the private sector, education, other public sector partners and the third sector if it's going to deliver our ambition. Although the council will be the key driver of the development of the strategy, it is something that must be owned by a range of organisations and bodies. Those conversations have already begun, and the response that we are getting from partners is quite overwhelming. They see a new dawn and a fresh approach, and they like it.
Right, Members. Members, thank you. We'll have to learn that we shouldn't go off on tangents, I think, for the next meeting. There was a lot of tangent moving around today, so it won't be accepted on either side next time. Just stick to the questions, please. That will be the last item on the agenda and concludes today's business. Before the meeting finishes, I'd like to thank everyone for taking part, even though you went off on tangents, and the members of the public and media who have watched this meeting. Thank you for your attendance. If you can remain seated while the switch off...